Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be able to join together this evening to take care of the town's business. We thank you, God, for the many blessings you bestow upon us, even though at times you are so undeserving. We thank you, Lord, for your son, Jesus, for salvation, for grace, for mercy. We ask God that as we go through these proceedings this evening that you bestow upon us and make a kingdom of wisdom, God, so that we can do the things that need to be done, that be pleasing in thy sight, that will serve the people of our community and even our visitors. As always, God, we ask for special blessing for our servicemen and women wherever they may be. Ask this in Jesus' name.
Let's all say a pledge of allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America is to be relevant for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I want to make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the whole business, new business acceptance of the Johnson County Open Space Fund. Is Matt here?
In the other room, I believe. You can hear him laughing.
Matt Smith.
I think that's what she said.
That's the zing.
Okay, because I ain't seen nobody do this.
Hey. Should I walk around that way? Hey, what's going on? Good evening, everybody. I guess this is before the grant from Johnson County. That's what I'm speaking about first. We applied for the Johnson County Open Space Grant. It was, when they put it out, it was about $60,000. And I put three grants in. The only people that were allowed to apply for this were Benson, Meadow and Forks, because it's for South Johnson area. And it's the, I guess it's the fee in lieu of when there's some construction and whatnot, they have to give money or give land and they give money. The county, I wrote three grants. I wrote one for a third, one for a half and one for everything, because I'm greedy and if you don't ask, you're never gonna get it. But they approved the $30,000 grant for new bleachers in the gym that are taller and four-side goals that are all adjustable and two permanent end goals that are adjustable, padding, safety padding as well. And they added $10,000 to our grant. They gave everybody $30,000 instead of $20,000. So all we have to do is say, "We want it," and it's ours.
Sure, it's $30,000.
Yeah. And we, they took away the match. There is no match. It used to be a 5% match. We would have to come up with $1,521 and now we don't have to come up with that. It's just, they just thought with everything going on, it'd be nice to push everybody.
Anybody have any questions, Matt? I'm entertaining a motion to accept this. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Yep, I'll see you in a little bit.
Our main reason for being here tonight is to discuss or to get the first look at the fiscal year 2021 budget. So I asked Fred, uh, town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm here to pretty much introduce my team who will make their case for the requests that they have before you. Initially, everyone got together and brought their requests around the table. I want to commend the team for being very thoughtful about the request that they brought to myself and to esteemed Assistant Town Manager. I think you'll see that what you have before you will be very thoughtful about some of that. I'll ask Kim to come on in. Kim, can you hear me?
This is the kind of day that it's been.
One thing, just by way of making a comment, I'm glad to see a speed listing that you should have a copy of before you got if you continue to do some of that this year based on approval for that part of the budget in particular. You have a lot of calls to the defense department and the rest of the world to be especially. Lots of calls I've been getting, calls about that street and people else. Other than Main Street. Mention that.
Has the traffic improved since that signed up for that way? On the, on the street? Been charged to there?
Keeping with something that I've mentioned to someone up longer, I've got really in Benson, 989, was something that I'd never noticed. And one of them was that there is already a sign that the rest of the world is the end of that street. Benson last time we met, we should have another each time where we had them. Life tells me I'm not ready for them, thinking them start the reason.
I'm sorry. We lost internet, guys. Okay. So we are here to present the draft budget for the upcoming 2021 fiscal year. I want to just give a couple of brief points and then the department heads are gonna present each one of their budgets. The first thing that we tried to do this year was actually correctly call center employees to their departments. For many, many years, water and sewer and electric have really held a lot of the salaries, which is not really an accurate representation to general fund. Also, there's a bigger need in the water and sewer budget and upcoming in the electric budget that are gonna need more funding out of their own budgets. And so I tried to properly assign everybody. So like for myself, I do for all departments. So I am a third, a third, a third. I'm a third in general, a third in water and a third in electric. So you will see as you go through this budget that some salaries are higher this year. The salary line items are higher this year than they were last year and that's because of that cost center in that we've done in this year's budget. So keep that in mind as you look through the many, many pages of the budget. The major cost in the planning department this year was the land use plan. We've all discussed that. So I'm hoping that's not a big surprise, but that is the biggest cost that you'll see out of the planning department. So you won't see Aaron present tonight, because that was the biggest one. Another thing is we have canceled all of the facility rentals for the year. We are still going to allow this building to be used for our nonprofit organizations and our partners like the Chamber, Science in the summer. Had, you know, had it not been canceled, we would still allow them to come and do that camp every year. Our partners like that, we will still allow to come. However, we are not making that a revenue stream that we're dependent on anymore, because it just wasn't making enough money. Then the final thought back to salaries. We have built in the budget a 3% COLA across the board for employees. We did not do it based on merit this year. We started with 3%. We'd like to kind of hear your thoughts once you've looked at it. I want to make a note, there's a couple of, this big sheet is your salary sheet. This is every FTE we have. A couple of notes. We are proposing that we move Tyler into more of a PIO role. So he would be, he's already basically doing the job. He does all of our press releases and he's the one who talks to the media when they email us or contact us by phone. So we would like to put him fully in that position and make him the PIO. There is a physician board development developer in there. Obviously, we have to fill the position of the Chief of Police. And then there is a couple of additions in the departments. Matt, Matt in Parks and Recreation is gonna ask to bring back the maintenance position that was taken away a few years ago. And then Alan is asking for a new part-time position in the fire department. So he'll discuss that further with you guys when he comes in to talk about his budget. All those things that I'm mentioning are bolded in your salary listing, so you can see. And then we have a couple of reassignment of role. We have an individual in the Public Works Department who's basically a foreman, but he runs as a superintendent, so it's just a physician title. We're gonna put him in that physician role that he's actually doing. And that puts Public Works more in line with how the physicians are in wastewater, which are both under the same department head. So it kind of makes sense to align those two departments properly. And then we've had, in the wastewater treatment plant, we've had a retirement and we've had somebody leave. So there are two vacant positions in that department. They're not new. It's just filling positions that were open. So if there's any questions on salaries, please let me know, but they will discuss it further whenever they come up and talk.
We are, Jamie Fisher, Inspector.
Yes.
Will he be replaced in the job he's in now?
Yes, yes. And that position is listed.
Is that this in here?
Yes, sir. It's listed on the second page and it is in order of funds. So it is on the second page as Equipment Operator. It's a vacant position in Public Works.
The other thing is the SRO, is that a new job?
No, that's actually the job that the county pays us for. Currently, Whitman sits in that position, but that is a, we've not filled that position, if I understand it, and double check with Greg when he comes out and talks to you guys. But that's my understanding is we still haven't filled that position.
Whitman's made move up to COO.
Right, but Whitman's title is actually Master Sergeant. He's, he's, he's serving as the cops officer, right, or as the SRO officer, but that's actually not what his role is.
So we got approved for those posts to the channeling with that split. We didn't ever, we never hired anybody to fill that position. We're just accepting most of them.
Yeah. A couple of things is, I think he's still trying to get Zoom working. So the next set is Tim, so let me see if if he's back in Zoom. Do I have any questions about, any more questions about salaries than what I just mentioned?
These benefits have been included.
These non-qualified benefits pass the package. You will see a fiscal year 20 salary, which is what we're currently in, with what we're currently getting paid right now. So if we've had any new employees that have, you know, and when a new employee comes in, right now they have a 12-month probationary period and they get a pay increase at 91, 80 and 360 days, 365 days. It's a one and a half, a one and a half and a two, which is 5% total, which is what we've always done in the past. We just used to give you full 5% at six months. So this, the 20, the first number you see is what they currently make today. And then proposed is that with a 3% increase for the COLA.
You mentioned in the beginning that taking your salary, for instance, if you charge the water, sewer and electric.
And general fund.
So general, we get $3.00.
Yes, sir. Yes. And, and there's, there's a few people in that role. So you've got myself and Fred. Obviously, we do for all departments, for everybody. And then my department, the finance department, they do for everybody. They work in general fund with collections that, for Parks and Recreation, for planning, for refus. They do all those collections. They make phone calls when something goes wrong for garbage. They're the ones talking to waste industry. So that is all general fund work. Lisa does payroll for everybody, so that, she's working across funds. And then, and then they're still doing utility stuff too, which is water, sewer and electric. So all those people are split between all the funds, as well as Angie, who serves a role for everybody. So she's split between all three funds. So we just tried to true it up and make it really what the general fund is supposed to be. Scott is between all funds. Correct. Yeah. Let me go see if we can get Tim for you guys. I'm so sorry about the internet problem. It's not planned. We've been on Zoom for 30 minutes and when it goes out, we'll just like. I'll have to put Tim on speaker. Hey, you're on speaker. You ready?
One more.
You're on the, the general fund's page about the proposal of the stormwater fee. Just hit the, just cut it off. Okay, ready? Okay. Stormwater fee. Stormwater and rain fees. Thanks, Chris. Yeah. I'll put you on speaker. Not yet. You will be. Okay, now.
Can I just read the slide?
Yes. Okay, go.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We're proposing a stormwater fee of $2.50 per customer. I apologize, the slide probably should indicate that this will fund earmark stormor, be earmarked for stormwater, address the stormwater issues or drainage issues around town. Roughly 1,735 customers generates around $52,000, $50 a year. You're aware, we're, we don't currently have any mechanism for funding the stormwater issues or repairs that are needed in the stormwater system around town. So we're proposing this stormwater fee. I think it's become something pretty common with Phase Two rules and all the stormwater regulations that exist, as well as the increased demand on the stormwater system in a lot of areas. They're having to implement something like this to generate the funds to work on the system in town. So $2.50 will create $52,000, $50 a year. We would look at, first and foremost, that would help fund the settlement in the 995 project. The, I think just, just shy of $500,000. There'd be duty for that, Doom Street, the stormwater line extension, remove that old pipe out or McDonald's and the Taco Bell property. So that, that would be some dollars of, which paying that off, which would probably come due to four or five years that was that project trapped up, as well as, as we address other items in town. We've, we've got some items that are already on, because they need to be addressed. That would give us a, a sudden to start working on these items with. They all move into refus.
Do I have any questions on stormwater?
That affects both commercially and residential customers equally.
Correct. Right, Tim?
Yeah, I think that's helping capital like Tim, but yes, I think it needs to be applied to all customers in town.
Okay. So refus.
All right, moving on to refus. We, we inherently have to account for a 3% increase in waste industry street in January 2021. That's something we've been pretty used to, that, that you'll know each year or that, that cost increase in that amount each year. Some of the items that we've talked about over the last few months are, we still have the existing issue of Porter Street, our yard waste, yard waste facility. We, we've got a growing, growing pound of yard debris out there. We typically grind it each year. Every year I've been here, I've seen, I've seen that grinding cost go up from about $8,000 to around $10,000. And I think last year we were just north of $11,000, just processing that material. And that's not getting rid of, we don't get rid of enough of it each year. But I'm anticipating a cost of $15,000 or so this year, because keep in mind, we're, to keep our waste industries contract costs down, we allow waste industries to dump all the yard waste that they collect in cans at our Porter Street facility. So we're, I don't necessarily save a money, we're just, just to pay waste industries to pay their landfill tip fees for those green cards. They're dumping them in our facility, but we're gonna save the maintenance or the operation of that facility go up as they're dumping that material in there. I estimate probably two to three thousand yards of material easily. It'll go to that facility just out of the waste industry trucks. We, we've still gotta collect steaks and leaves. As a result, we probably would invest, you know, $65,000 a year in labor and equipment, collecting that material. And something that I think we've never really accounted for is just cart management. If you break down the amount of time the town staff and equipment is invested in managing carts for our customers, this is considered, if they're looking to pursue them now, I'd say in all the single day passes that Public Works team doesn't roll the truck, the police, Benson, what's the date? To, to replace a car, repair a car, pick up a car, deliver a new car. That, that's never really accounted for in that, in that waste industry field. That's, that's expense that the town's just taking on and not recovering any of it. So.
Tim, I didn't, I didn't realize we were having to pay that, because they're the ones that charge the car. Why should we pay for that? They turn the wheels off.
We don't, we don't pay to repair the car, but you've still got, you've still got the man hours and the vehicle hours invested in making sure that our customers have the cars that they need, whether it's replacing a broken one or delivering one out to the new customer or picking one up from the customer that's canceled service. I can still, maybe they'll have a garbage cart somewhere along the way.
So the contract that we have with them, they're not required to maintain and replace those carts?
They maintain them and replace them.
Well then, shouldn't they be the ones delivering the new cart?
Um, that's a question that we have to ask ourselves. I think they're obligated to. I think the difference we see in regards to local service is today, if you pick up the phone at Cull Town Hall and have a waste cart issue, it's resolved by Public Works staff the same day. I don't know that you get that same response time out of waste industries. I think if you call in a broken car, you, I don't believe you get one that same day. You might get one the next day. I'd say you certainly get one by the, by the next pickup day, the following week. So we're, we're sort of going above and beyond what the trash service industry probably too does by having a stockpile of carts from the Public Works yard and being that first, that first phone call for our customers to be sure that they've got a good functional car the same day.
As far as the 3,000 yards that you said were intaken every year in the yard waste, are we allowed to have people come and pick up that yard waste at that facility or not? Are we permitted for that?
I have to. It's your question.
You broke up.
Well, I didn't, I thought the question was, are we allowed to have people, allow people to pick the stuff up out of the facility?
Yeah, I mean, if there is any kind of program that we put into place where maybe we could offer the compo, that compost or something, the compactor or something, for them to come to remove it free, to try to get us down on that cost that we're having.
I've currently got a, got a landscaping contractor that's picking up some, a little bit of the compost material. I think he's probably blending it with some topsoil and, or he's screening some topsoil and blending it to make a finished product, garden soil, cut product. The bottom line is, if we just generate more than we can find an outlet for in this area. We've done the weekend pickup and those kind of things. Realistically, we, we probably get rid of a hundred yards or so each summer just to the residents picking it up. We reached out to, to Landis Hall, Carol's Plant Center and he indicated to me, he actually spent a little time explaining to me the reason that he won't take it and a lot of the nursery industry won't take it is there's, there's a specification for material in the nursery industry and this doesn't need it without a lot of them in it. And it's just not worth their trouble to take it. So there's a certain specification that nursery industry has to meet or has agreed amongst each other to meet for their plotting material. And this, this isn't what they need. So it's just, it's hard to find an outlet. We're generating more than we can get rid of.
So one of the things Tim and I have talked about is do we need to increase the garbage fee a little bit more than the three percent in January in order to obtain some cost savings and and recoup some of that money back because right now these numbers that you have, the fifteen, the sixty five, the four, is all coming out of general fund budget and we're not getting any revenue to cover that cost. It's just a straight expense out. Um because as you all remember, when we when we did the fee for garbage, it is a straight in and out fee. We charge the customer what waste industry charges us. So there is no revenue gain there. Um so we've discussed that fee may be going up a little bit more in January and we wanted to kind of get a feel for what your thought on that was first before we went further and calculated some. We calculated some amounts but um but we kind of wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
What I tell you, I've I've asked five people. I I didn't like the the reason you got into the trash picture.
They don't know.
And they said, what? I I don't know anything about it.
Now, we we've renewed this contract. When does it come up to remove any of waste industries?
We've just renewed it um this right up right when Fred came on and so um three years.
Three years.
Five years.
It oh, five years. Yeah, five years.
Since I've been on the board for nine years, I've had the same question and I do not understand. Still, when I understand I'm business person, one of the other question. I do not understand how we do anything where we pay X and we charge X because there's always other expenses. So really, I'm not saying that we should rip somebody off, but at the same time, we should never do something while I spend this month. And I think we need to.
Okay.
I think we should have a discussion. I think another discussion we need to have involved that is are we getting what we're paying for in that contract from waste management? We I don't think our people should have to manage carts if they're under contract with us. I think they should follow under waste management. And I also think we might need to look at how much does it cost us to hold the overage of material and how much does it cost us in the long run versus if we were to increase that charge and have waste management haul it out of here and take it to the landfill? That that might be it might not be as different as you think it is. Might not be saving money. We may just be pushing the problem on to the future if we can't get rid of it.
If we're gonna continue to charge what we pay, we just let them do it and let them charge more than charge what we pay.
That's right.
Yes, but our problem.
Then you put the phone numbers on the cans and say if the cans broke, call waste management and have them come and fix the can. That way our staff is not ever in that.
Okay.
We don't work for them in the free.
They use an automated arms now. They turn the wheels off every week.
They do and and we used to when Tim first came a few years ago. We had a man sitting at the yard, one of our employees, repairing the trash cans. So we're so we were spending more time repairing trash cans and then putting those repaired trash cans back out. But what you'll see now is we'll get phone calls from waste industries saying or from customers saying my cart got stolen. And we're like, no, the cart was probably broke and they just dumped the whole thing in the truck and crushed it. So we'll get you a new one. So that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. But we will um we will go back and we will look at the fees and we will get something proposed and we will bring it back to that main meeting because we basically have some numbers crunched and we'll just put it together and and bring that back in there.
I would also like we we've mentioned this in the past few years since I've been on the board. I'd also like to look at the number of cars that we got downtown versus if we could save any money doing centralized for the downtown area. I know if I think Dr. Rayner, you've done it behind your building. Because I know I've got six carts and I know I pick them up every winter and they're broken and tore up and get gone and I just wonder how much turnover we could save and how much cleaner to downtown because we can get rid of some carts.
So what we did behind Dr. Rayner's office and if y'all haven't seen it, you need to drive by and look at it. I think it was an awesome idea. And so we've taken that idea and we've done the same thing on the um block behind La Piazza. So if you go by there now and and they haven't um they all just received their fees last week and so we're still we're still working on that alley, that that block of of customers. Um but prior to this, there were several cans, like you said. There was also two dumpsters already back there and then another dumpster on the Johnson lot. It was just it it was stuff everywhere. And so we we are working towards getting the blocks like that, more like Dr. Rayner's block. And um we just gotta get all the business owners on board. So we are trying to do that. We're doing we're taking it block by block.
Same cause that I always heard it.
Um if you get everybody involved, you're not losing any money. So that I think I think your cans a little bit more or your cost for garbage is just a few dollars more than what you would pay for a garbage can because it is that dumpster. But that dumpster is also getting cleaned out twice a week because you've got um cornerstone who serves food and so you can't keep food in there all week because it'll smell. So they're they're cleaning those dumpsters twice a week and you've got more service going out there too. So but but we are working on that. Okay. So the next thing um Tim is going to discuss that comes out of the general fund is the streets department. And if you look at the last page of your packet, you will see the actual next street listing. It's a one pager. It's um and I didn't bring mine. I'm sorry. It's in the other room. Yes, it looks like this. So that's the next um set of streets that Tim's going to discuss um when he talks about the street service uh resurface fund. So Tim, you are good to go.
All right, um let me draw your attention to one area. I've got the streets list in total of four hundred and eighteen thousand. For some reason, I think I gave Kim a bad number for one time so um this their streets department slides should correlate the streets list is at four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um and that's always a little bit adjustable. You can move a street in or out, move that number but um as you know, we get roughly a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year um from NCDOT in the form of tile build. Um we've estimated a hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars. That's always a moving target by a thousand dollars or so each year. But um so you're you're looking at another three hundred thousand or a little more to um to cover the streets list. Now, this is this is taking another big stab at our streets resursing these. This past year, we we did um almost five hundred thousand dollars for street worth of streets resursing and and we got a lot of good work done. Um but this would be another large stab at that if we if we wanted to uh pull a pretty hefty sum out of unbalance, spare it with the tile build for this year and um and tackle this list of streets.
Approved, when would it be done?
What's the question?
If it's approved, when will we be able to do the next set of listings? We'd have to put out for bid.
Yeah, it it would go out for bid and and historically um we ti- we typically land at the end of the paving season, which is which is really best for us because we give a cheaper price. Um in the world of asphalt, even a five hundred thousand dollar paving contract is uh really a pain that is is small potatoes in the paving industry so um we sort of fall in at the tail end of of the paving season. Um I think we.
We lost.
You seen the view? I got you.
Yeah, you're right.
I I think we can see a considerable increase in the bid prices if we try to uh specify um a summer deadline or even a early fall deadline as opposed to um wrapping things up typically towards the end of the calendar year. Um so I would imagine to answer your question sometime at the end of this year.
Tim, don't you think with DOT business being cut more than in half that the the cost of of asphalt and paving is going to go down in the latter part of this year, but the other part of it, we already considered going back to that guy that gave us that low price that time because I've talked to the other towns in Johnson County and they they've had really good luck with him. He's he's about thirty percent less than the than the big contract.
Yeah, I think um I I say yes to both of those questions. Um I think as DOT source of um that they're struggling through some big crunches and and asphalt is just like gasoline. It's uh it's supply and demand. As demand goes down, the uh the price is going to fall. It's not going to fall through the floor. I don't anticipate where we uh where we just give a a great deal on it, but um but I agree and and I think the gentleman, the company that uh that did our last contract, he had a major error in his path and we um we just were not in a position to uh to allow him to change his bid, being that it was publicly bid. Um he had to back out because he had a pretty serious error in his milling process so I think we need to uh I I told him then that we would reach out to him again the next time we had a contract with him buying the bid so he might he might be able to beat some of the others as he did this past year. Even with having his math correct this time.
Questions on it. Okay, so the next is the leafback truck.
Um this is something we discussed as we uh we talked through this a few months ago with um with not uh pursuing a contract to outsource our steel and leaf. This, I believe, is a critical component to uh to allow us to do this work with um with our forced account labor, with our own staff. Um we we currently own a leafback and a leaf box that mounts on the truck on the back of a flatbed dump truck. Um every time you go dump, you have to disconnect the towable leafback from the truck. Slows us down a good bit um for uh two people hooking up to a trailer multiple times, but they just can just invite some opportunity for um an accident pinch fenders or things like that or even worse. Um so this this device that I'm looking at is uh is the same type of leafback system. It's just um it's all mounted as a towable unit and the leaf collection box is actually on the back. So you would hook it to a truck and go pick up licks and and you can dump it without having to disconnect any equipment from the truck. And uh and when you're done, you can disconnect it and use the truck for something else.
Nope, we lost him. Um so that he I he now will say Tim asked for two things. He asked for a dump truck and he asked for a leafback. Um and if you notice, general fund is not balanced. I do not I have not presented you with a balanced budget. I wanted to get kind of your feel for what we have so far and then I'll work it taken away. The only two funds that aren't balanced is general fund and water sewer. So he did ask for two things um and and leafback was the most um needed right now. The dump truck could probably wait until next fiscal year. So just to kind of keep that in back of your mind um that we get a leafback this year, he will probably be asking for a dump truck next year.
Why they guess something you want to leave in after this cut?
Yeah. Um and then the next thing was the stormwater fee um which he's already discussed and I don't think y'all had any further questions on that so. The next thing is going to be um the police department. So Greg should be coming in to present um the police department's budget. You can grab. There it is. That has to go out to that to the bell in there.
All right, um I'll try to make this as brief as possible and painless. Currently, our fleet contains seventeen vehicles. Four of those have reached the point where they're, in our opinion, they're eligible to be surplus and they do the mileage in each. Um in addition, we have a a primary vehicle that has a cooling system malfunction. It's what costs us about a thousand dollars to uh to have fixed, but we're holding off on that until the start of the new budget year with let's say some getting fixed right now. In doing the research for the budget, we found that essentially Dodge has has halted production of the chargers continuing the delay that we experienced last year and it's carried forward this year. The earliest we'll be able to place an order would be September. Manufacturing will start in November and hopefully with all goes well, you can expect November and February. We could we could put off a vehicle for that long, but there is another option that we would like to have considered. There are there are five vehicles that are police rated that are on the market right now. One which is a Ford F-150 responder for about thirty two thousand, a Ford police intercept utility SUV for thirty two five, Chevrolet Tahoe for thirty five thousand. We have the Dodge Charger with an estimated cost of twenty seven thousand dollars for this year. And then you have the Durango with a with a price slightly over thirty thousand dollars. We had Enterprise put together a quote for us and they came in at fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for a yearly cost. Additionally, we uh we need a replacement for the air control truck so we would be looking just for a stock F-150 two-wheel drive. We just a plain basic vehicle and Enterprise came in at fifty five hundred and forty four dollars for that.
So you could lease three vehicles for for a year for twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the uh total lease amount is twenty thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars.
How how long does the term of the lease?
Five years. It'd be the same as the two months. Included in the in the price and the cost of that lease is the emergency lighting and the equipment. The radios we would move from one car to another because they're transferable. Um the only external cost we would have would be for the actual police graphics and we can have that done for about two thousand dollars for all three vehicles. Additionally, Enterprise has agreed to surplus our our vehicles for us and they've given us an estimated net of about fourteen thousand dollars for essentially the trade-in of those vehicles that we would like to get rid of. Um four of those are actually belong to the police department and one of them is the planning vehicle that I mean that's a two thousand eight Charger with eighty five thousand miles. It's probably well outlived its lifespan. The only uh the only downside to to this Enterprise thing is that the manufacturing deadline to place the order is the end of May. If if we want delivery this year, if if we miss that deadline, it'd be twenty twenty one before we can get any vehicles at all.
You talking about for the Dodge?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Um so what I would need basically is is authorization to have Enterprise reserve two vehicles for us. There's no cost associated with it. Basically, they're just putting us into queue and there'd be no payment until we actually take delivery late this year. Our other option would be to to hold off for the Dodge Charger, but like I said, you don't know how much the price is going to be because it's not been set yet and you're also looking at a first quarter of twenty twenty one if all goes well. Uh the last thing that I have on in my presentation is capital reserve fund. The police department has returning equipment needs that we get hit with, you know, every few years, like body armor. Um we we had radios, laptop computers, stuff that we have to replace every every so often. And historically, we've used grants to fund that. You know, we get, we get grants from the state, from the government grant commission and sometimes federal grants. We got twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for radios, fifteen thousand for laptops. And in this year's budget, we, we made a grant request of sixteen thousand dollars for four licenses. To, uh, kind of eliminate the distress that's associated with, with grant cycles, though, we'd like to create a capital reserve fund specifically for equipment needs for the police department and fund that through the proceeds from golf park permits. I went back and checked and in the last ten years, uh, we generated over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the sale of golf park permits.
How much was it last year?
Uh, seventeen, seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
You know what went with that money?
What's that?
You might keep a check.
I, I, it just disappears into a general fund from what I'm told. But if we could, even if we could just get a portion of it, you know, to, to help fund our equipment needs, it would be.
Well, I think we'll keep it. Look, look at your report that you got when we had the, uh, review of, of, uh, U V A last year. And, uh, you'll see that the golf park revenue was supplied to them and given to them.
No, it's not given to, it, it, we lose money on U V A every year.
If I can look at that, I just, I just, I just looked at it and it, it has it on there. And it was thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars. We can even look at that because I think, uh, that was the gift that, uh, that the town manager gave to the chairman.
I thought that's all that we offset it, towards the cost of U V A to bring that thing down to what we lose. I mean, the only thing we get to the chairman is the five thousand dollars donation, is that correct?
Correct.
But that's the same, that's the same thing when you, you give them credit, you're giving them money. In other words, uh, our cost of, of U V A is.
Thirty-eight thousand and then if you apply the money and then take it, it balances out the cost.
If they're supposed to pay all the costs of security, well, most of them. We need to look at that. But I, I think it, you know, them having a, a council reserve account is not a bad idea. These things you have to have. We need to check on that, as to how that works.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't sell any of the old cars.
Yes, sir.
Hello, good evening, Commissioner.
Good to see you, Mr. Alves.
Absolutely, always. Okay. Um, so my authority in two bands, um, we, uh, in, in, since Scott's come aboard and all, I've been talking to him about, um, coming up with a part-time salary for, for assistant chief, uh, to help me on administrative side and kind of be there when I'm not there. So we've got built into the budget, um, the changing over my, my first assistant chief, um, which is Chief Anthony Bird, and adding him on as, as a part-time, uh, salary, um, assistant chief. Kind of put him to a permanent position. Um, and again, he'll be working like twenty hours a week, um.
What was your heat paying the part-time guy?
The part-time employees of this one, this one?
No, the one that, I thought you were getting rid of the part-time and you're getting the full-time.
No, 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 uh, we're just, we'll keep the part-time, the two daily part-time positions we have now. Um, and then this will just be in addition, uh, part-time assistant chief.
Right now, you've got you full-time.
Me full-time.
You got two part-timers and one full-time firefighter. And so there's four on duty per day.
Per day, now, now, this, uh.
This one, Mark Clive?
Right, but he's only gonna be part-time, kind of filling in when I'm not there or at other meetings. But I mean, right now, he's volunteer and he gets the paper call and, uh, just like the other volunteers that we have. Um, but there's, I mean, he assists with, obviously, the volunteers, the paid employees. Uh, meetings, just like, like we had a cheese meeting, but it was, uh, uh, commerce call. So I had him, you know, do that. Um, but anytime I'm in classroom, vacation, um, out, there'd be administrative type person that, that kind of fill in. Of course, we coordinate that weekly and, and for him to pull his twenty hours, still run calls and be there, you know, just like he is right now. It's a good time in his, for what, because he forms, he's around town every day unless he's out of town. As far as what he does, he's around town, so he's able to put in, put in the time and the hours and assist. So again, that's what, what we're proposing on that. And again, that's built into the budget, so other than, than the ten cent we get from, you know, fire taxes in, in Johnston County, Hornet County, and then the town allocates ten cents, that's figuring in. And then Kim and Ms. Fred and I met, um, like I was able to keep that in, you know, saying ten cent budget it would be.
What's your, uh, what's your part-time rate in the part-time firefighting? What do you pay him for hours?
Uh, eleven to thirteen feet.
Eleven to thirteen feet, eight hours a day?
Uh, nah, maybe you pay too much. Just cause we don't have to get a call too much and whatever, too.
You think the part-time chief, you'd rather have that than another full-time person?
Uh huh, right now, yes.
When we go to full-time, it's another separate problem.
But in, in, in main, in the main reason, um, you know, that's many good product. So at least with this, I mean, all the meetings at night that we have, um, between the both counties, um, just, just holding, I mean, it's like six, seven nights a week in a month that we have and we can split it. And if you got something, I mean, it, it would be a bigger beneficiary to me now, uh, as long as we can keep the part-time, so, you know, keep walking it. Let's say it would be next, very helpful. Uh, next, so the purchase of education equipment, so I think I got budgeted forty-eight thousand, uh, within the same budget, um, for equipment. So the new truck that we got in, uh, my plan is to sell that and then take that money and buy this extra, extrication equipment to, to outfit the dump truck.
You don't have one of these, though?
We've got two, yes, sir, but, but we won't put on, on the next truck. Um, so we got, but this one, this, the, the, the hydraulics, I mean, so they take, take up less room than having one of these tools in a pump and, and then we stick it on, on the other engine. So this one didn't go in the new truck, it was gonna mean you got to be less, less, uh, space. But by this and Graham, I'd like to say that was done from the sale of it. And I feel, feel like we'd get, you know, rent for twenty thousand for that truck, that's what we've been doing this.
Okey-dokey.
And that's, that's all I have, how to do.
Any more area questions about it?
Not a bunch.
How would that affect, because you said people in the deep, if you run a heap, pop one of the drop calls? So how would that affect the volunteer side?
How would it affect the volunteer?
Yeah, because I know y'all got rules as far as.
Yeah, so, so, so he, he'd be just like the other part-time, you need to play part-time or volunteer. So his volunteer status, he won't get no more paper call. It'd just be the, be the, you know, twenty hours a week, that'd be divided up, one rainy calls and being there whenever we need him to, but he, he won't get the volunteer check and you would get paid by what we just like the other.
So he loses his first call.
Correct, yes, sir.
He can answer that while the other fifty dollars for more, no more than that.
Six, seven, yeah, he's, he's, he's about, he's eighty percent right now. But he only gets paid once a year, just like the other volunteers. But he'll lose that, he'll become like, he's a little aware and he's like, hey, good guys, I say, you sure you're losing it? Okay, we're losing it, one time for you and get the check over to me.
How much is that, do we know? How much that help is to be part of one per year, what we're paying him per year for power?
Last year was a little over right now, minus taxes.
He'll just even pay him off even for a few more weeks?
He said every year, but yeah, I mean, yeah, I assume so, they said he was.
You have the part-time salary for twenty hours a week, or is it gonna be hours if he runs through twenty hours a week?
So we're seeing salary, the cost can be, possibly, um, so that's a, a salary part-time. We're basing on twenty hours, but we obviously have a bunch of dollars, make a bunch of dollars, still can be. Unless we find out, I don't know, we can look, we can possibly, with a, with a part-time person, I guess. Not, not if you have a salary. Some, some pay from that. So if you go over twenty hours, you know, twenty-five hours, you could.
So the salary. Be in the salary.
And I'm not interested, something we talked about when we met.
He gets stuck on a call out there for fifteen hours, just made a call and he goes over twenty hours, it's twenty-nine thousand. Well, I think legally required, it's only been forty thousand, so it's a number of hours.
I say, we did talk about that, but I, I mean, the way we felt is we go ahead and designate that for him as a salary part-time.
Mike, it's hard to be an administrator.
So then, so twenty-nine to ten feet. Thanks a lot, Andy. So you mind if I ask? Thanks, thank you.
Go for ours.
Good evening. Um, so for this budget year. Is that bad? Can you guys hear me? Okay, um, I was getting hand motions here and I was like, what's that mean? Um, so for this budget year, what I tried to do was after having a really big remodel at the library this year, is to start thinking about things that need doing, um, things, projects that we need to work on so that we can plan for those projects instead of using reserve funds and things like that. So for this year, um, the major project that identified as the necessity for our department is gonna be new front doors. Um, this here is actually a song quote that we received from Glass Depot. Um, they came out, took a look at everything, they will be bron, it's over bron, something like that. It'll actually match the time period of the building. Um, if you look in the bottom left, the left-hand corner of the screen, you can see that's actually a picture from April thirteenth of this month. Um, that was at eight-ten a.m. and we had a really heavy rain. And you can see a large puddle on the floor, um, there at the front door. With that there, I will go ahead and tell you it did wet the carpet. Um, so before we've even opened, our new carpet has already got wet, um, that morning. As soon as I saw it, something told me to check the cameras that morning, so I looked. As soon as I saw the water, I come on in after the storm and started cleaning up. Um, we put fans out, got the floor dried out. So my biggest thing is, is I don't want that to happen. I don't want to mess up the work we've already done. So that is why I have identified this as the, the most pressing, um, project for our department for this upcoming year. So, um, unfortunately, that's one of those, I guess, necessary repairs that have to happen from time to time.
There was a number of, of people that had annual gifts that appeared into the library. That still happened?
So I know that there are two annual gifts that come into the library at this time. Um, and we account for those in the, is it the donation? It's either the donation line item, but there is a line item, um, on the budget that, that accounts for that. I think it was like twelve-five this year. Library income, there we go, thanks. Um, so with that there, we get, um, one, I know one check comes in in December and we've been getting another check either January or February from, um, another family. That's the only two checks that I know of, Kim, have I missed anything? Okay, so that's the only two checks that I know of and they're already built into our budget for the year.
There's a lot of grants that were around now.
So the only problem with grants, and I found out this today because I actually applied for a thousand dollar COVID-nineteen, um, grant for our library. Um, I got a phone call from the county director today telling me that we were not eligible, followed by an email from the state library. Um, being that we are an affiliate of Johnston County Public Library, we are not eligible for state or federal funded. All of that has to come through the county. Um, Fred and I were going back and forth today talking about how do we find those things and how do we apply for those through the county? That's a process I'm just starting to embark on. So that's something, if we do identify something based on how they have us listed at the state level, and I actually pulled it up today because it kind of sounded confusing to me when I found out that we weren't eligible. They actually have us listed at the state library as Mary Duncan Public Library, an affiliate of Johnston County Public Library.
Are we an affiliate?
We are.
Why?
So that is actually part of the contract. So with that, that's the contract we just approved, was it last month or the month before? With the county, it's the five-year contract.
It's a renewal contract.
Yes. So this is the same contract we pay at, basically under the contract, the county receives federal funding, um, based on the number of affiliates they pay up. And they use that money to supply the check-in and out system. So basically, our library system, which house a lot of money.
And Smith here.
Yes, so they, they supply that countywide and they also supply our databases, which the databases who run anywhere, ten, twenty thousand dollars a year.
Well, we don't think hard about, uh, being affiliate, we don't get any, any benefit from it.
So.
But the contract also doesn't state that you can apply for grants.
Mm-hmm.
So trust and believe will be helping too.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that and see what we can find out. Um, and there may be, there, there'll be, we'll be looking at that because that's something new. I just literally learned today after applying for a grant, um, because I did not realize that under the contract, that's, that's how the state has us listed as a library. So no matter where we apply, they're gonna check our verification with the state of North Carolina library system and they're gonna see that we're an affiliate.
Do we have the donations that he gets available for our, on his, but it's library income.
That's not his, he gets a little bit of like.
I think total, it's about ten thousand maybe in donations roughly. And I think it goes down every year a little bit based on the market and stuff. And then, um, everything else is like these. And when you say twenty-five cents a day for a book, we're not making a lot of money there. Um, the other income is based on our copy bring-ups. But for that, we're having to buy the paper and we're paying it out in a copier service contract. Um, because that is a huge service we provide for this time.
Okay, anyone have any question?
Even mine too, just, we made a note, um, just so you're aware. Next, this is part of about the doors or part of the operating business this year. Another major need that we need, that we gotta start thinking about for next fiscal year is his air conditioning. If y'all recall, they're kind of like ground level on that right beside where there's like steps that go down. And that leak. Yeah, they're below the building, like kind of basement level. And that leak, so every time it rains, water fills up. We have got to get those lift it up somehow with some roof or so that's a consideration that we are going to start pricing and figuring out how to kind of tackle that leak for um the the twenty one twenty two.
Well, I don't think this means to hide it.
It's not.
Education with the board. You know, at least all this way.
As an affiliate for Johnson County, if the library April and December.
We're not allowed to turn our attention to people. We can have somebody else who's in rotation for us.
Same.
Like you know, half the part transportation.
Same thing with you Tim, with that especially. Having outside thought a little more pretty secret expenses.
And I will say before we did put this in the budget, Tim and I have spent a lot of time looking at these doors to see if they can be repaid anyway or fixed. Um, what we found out is when they were fixed, the last time they were doing rigged. So there is no way to fix it because the hinge on the door we actually used is not the original hinge. Um, it's a modified hinge. And then there is no way to adjust the doors. Um, so not only do they leak, but we can't fix that. But also we have metal striften inside the doors that hold the glass in. That striften files out that way. Um, so we have to put that back in.
This is not a next year's thing. This is talking about this year.
So it'll be for next year's budget. So basically, what we're trying to do is to link along until we can get the money, set aside, technically take care of it.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, thank y'all.
Watch the red.
Get to see me twice. You lucky devil. Um, the only. I switch it. I switch it.
Yeah.
Um, the big ticket items I have on top or on top of usual is the reinstatement of a full time maintenance person. We lost our maintenance person five years July, not in July, it'd be five years. Uh, he was moved to public works and it's, and we suffered because of it. Um, the grounds don't look as nice. The, you know, I've got some kids that are working at their high school and college age kids and wonderful kids, super nice, don't have the experience or the knowledge. Uh, we need to get somebody back in there that that knows what they're doing. And can and can start building it back up. The second thing was uh we need to resurface our shuffleboard courts. We did two thousand eight, back in two thousand eight, it cost us five thousand, five hundred dollars, I believe is what it was. So I'm sure that's gonna be more now. I've got a problem is the company that put those courts in that resurfaced it the last time is no longer coming up here to do it. They're from Florida. I'll find a person in Raleigh and I'm waiting on his quote to, for him to get back to me how much it's gonna, how much it's gonna cost us to research shuffleboard courts. And the last thing was the golf cart that we would use for special events, um five K, Fourth of July, meal days. Um, tournaments, we do a lot of shuffling of concession stands. We do a lot of concession equipment, a lot of shuffling of trash bags that during during a tournament, there's bags and bags of bags of trash. Um, we want to get something that is not a truck that can get around easier, that's a lot safer, that's not going around with people. Um, and not, it'd be much more safer in crowds. Um, and every, every five K, I'm begging somebody to use a golf cart to to uh follow the racers and to pick up signs and it'd just be more convenient for us to uh get some stuff done. Uh, I put in five thousand for the cart, but I'm sure I can get one in there or less. And then I don't know about shuffleboard courts. I'm not, I'm waiting on that bit. I'll wait on that quote. I'm sorry. We put thirty five thousand dollars in for salary, full time salary.
Anybody have any questions?
We cannot drive the gator on the road. We have a gator. We can't, we're not allowed to drive it on the road. Uh, dragon fields and field equipment too. We keep it at the this part. If we do want to move it over to Nance, we have to put it on a trailer and take it on the trailer.
Okay.
Good.
Any question?
Yep, thank you.
Should be home soon to talk about some thirty. Yeah.
It creates the uh four place fifty five dollars. Well, the assumption by half percent in saying increase in sewer charges will. I don't, I don't believe that in the last hour. The act I have to not increase our our charge is probably about possibly going to go to, but it's going to be replaced in three to four years. In there, but so we're gonna say some uh some increase out of our system. It's all similar guys. It is. In last year's budget. It was um we increased it and discussed it. We were, we were standing to increase, so we might want to increase last year and this for the second, second half of that increase for this year. Any questions about that?
If our things in Johnson County are going to go up by three percent for the water, is that dollar fifty base increase going to cover our fee?
Oh, we'll just raise the rate that we're charging them on the sewer. Two thousand three percent.
Give me team.
Yeah.
So Dunn is not gonna raise that rate, you said?
Not that we've heard so far.
We're doing, Harley County is doing things?
Uh, I don't know.
But don't getting Dunn do something where there's work stuff where it's all done in Harley County?
Oh, I'm not sure.
I think it has to be. We live well. I know because of location company and stuff like that, but I want to check in that I think Harley County does all Dunn's. They merged them all together.
Okay, we'll look.
I ain't saying that. They were, they were working on something about it.
I know last year Dunn gave us their numbers like the very last minute. So. Yeah, I mean, his friends are already working just mad at the time and and they told us we had already presented the budget. It was silent. And then they told us, oh, by the way. So we have this equipment there.
We, we needed for it. And that were increases after the last one. We uh we did not change our.
Have you, have you discussed sewer base or?
Yeah, we did. It is, that was actually proposed in last year's budget to do it two years in a row. And so we're just continuing it through.
We're certainly gonna have to notify uh.
E G I.
Perry Plastics.
We are, we will.
Because I, I tell you that we're consumers to be how our water, I don't believe they get that from us.
It's the same to me, like with all the water lines, with the issues we keep running into, our costs keep going up. I just want to make sure that we've got enough that we're covering costs that we're having to replace and repair. Make sure that base increase will 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 cover the county's increase. Plus, because we're looking at forty.
There's some stuff that has to be done. Also, it's a, it's a pastime. With different utilizing capacity, they are prepared to use basically right now in the current and in development. We don't charge a meter for an interview. We don't charge um what's more, take the view now as a uh as a capacity fee and it's guaranteed off there. It's used and it's a single one time.
That commercial or residential? That's just commercial, right? So that will be in addition to a residential tax fee?
For your, for your paying. With our debt. It's a lot of what I'm talking about. That has to create some change in system.
Okay.
You add more money. It's if you do that, you're adding out of the means of work, so it's a residential program. Um, but that's something. And being that I'm one who will work out and we'll see that. I'm looking at the data that will be moving. It's here to get that one, but too. Any other questions? For next slide?
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, both days uh there. We didn't tend to uh public works. So the uh changing personnel continuing to increase the duties. Well, I'm already increasing the duties on this. But looking at my acquisition from a moment to a public works superintendent. Um, also adding a public works specialist into the department. Some of these are related to just increase plan. On reducing resources from certainly adding getting up sticks and leaves. This position would be a big assistance in that. Um, and so on that. We're rolling that up again. Vacancy of other words. And we currently have two vacancies in the wastewater treatment plant. Those guys are very good. Door time is burning. So we may operate for three weeks. There are the work room called maybe three weeks. So it's certainly need to be added. Uh, we're getting, not adding, we're getting back to the original staff that existed in wastewater treatment. Equipment, yeah. Buying a U T V gator or raker or something, something along those lines. Or U T V to be utilized. Keep doing that, actually reduce the uh the licenses that you would be able out there that you currently have. Revenue. Who uh will replace that truck in this U T V. Also, continue doing that. She uh uh utility body truck, horse and rail. There's a disability in uh to the yeah, probably. It's supposed to replace the hog water at your first screen device. Replace that four year old, four year old. As well as um starting to work with replacing hog waters. Oxidation inches have again, water is this year around. So these uh these need to be replaced. That money would go towards that as well. We uh we get a lot. It helped us tremendously in tackling these things. But if I consider a couple months and I were to shake down that great process. Also, transfer funds uh that they are helping with that. Horizon is talking more now. Transfer those dollars directly to the public to apply maintenance of the insurance.
Questions for Tim on the floor somewhere?
Any questions? Okay. Link is the part.
Let me see, Glenn's on here. Glenn, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty, we're ready. That's okay. I'll do it. If they have questions, you'll just be there. Um, some of the big ticket items that Glenn is asking for, um, he is, he is fully staffed. Um, right, Glenn? You're fully staffed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Missing one vac, got one vacancy. That's right, because we had one just leave. That's right. Um, what Glenn needs is for line improvements and you'll see these dollars in the line improvement item. Um, that includes a skat, a skat, skater update. Um, we are in need of an underground assessment. There are some breaker upgrades that need to be done and then he is continually changing um poles throughout the town that have just aged out. Um, and that is a costly endeavor. Um, so those are some of the the big things you'll see in the line improvement line item. And then we I guess some years ago, he bought a ditch witch that was a lot cheaper than what um we had anticipated, but a future need not, not wrapped up in this um twenty twenty one budget, but something that we need to look for in the twenty one twenty two budget is a ditch witch. Um, and its estimated cost right now is sixty six thousand dollars. Um, obviously, we have some excess revenues and in the next year, I'll probably come to the board and request that purchase, but right now um he can get along for another year with what he's got. Um, but those are some of his big ticket items that he had in the electric department. And one thing they are all gushing over and would like to show their appreciation for over and over again is the new line truck that y'all allowed us to purchase um this year, which we'll start paying for next year. Um, but they used it to do that outage um this past week, the one we had at midnight. And he said that you would think you were in the, in the daytime. I mean, it lit up so much. I mean, it was, they said it was awesome to work with that, that custom equipment that we were able to get. So thank y'all.
Glenn, how are you utilizing skater now?
We don't have any skater on this system. So if we're counting. Um, we're repotting. I'm still here. Others currently be with me about fourteen thousand. That's a mission around twelve thousand dollars. Forty two D equipment we buy.
Well, I tell you, you really would improve your, your efficiency if, if you, if you've got interest paid. And you'd be able to get information if you probably didn't get that.
Well, sometimes I'm talking in helping with that, we really think that we, we need to do that.
What you to say is you're talking about dollar wise?
Yeah, dollar wise. Uh, you need to say five twelve thousand dollars. Our.
Okay.
Not budget related, but we're studying the updates on the load.
Leon, do you have any updates on that?
When we get so we can get Hallie, uh, we gotta get Jimmy and Glenn and Fred and myself. And talk to Crystal and sit down and talk about it because, uh, we gotta be honest with ourselves. Load management right now is a detractor. And even though we're getting some benefit from it, we sure are spending a lot of money to get. That, that's what we, we do.
Yeah.
To talk about when we can, when we can get somewhere.
That's it. That's all I got for you guys. Glenn, Dean has a question about when are we pulling old poles out of the ground? That have already been changed over.
We need to come up something that we give them material, we tell them on whatever we're gonna send them bills, we have to do it. Because some of these folks been together, but we changed my business years.
Yeah.
And it would really clean up the town a lot if you get rid of all of them.
Yeah.
Because it, it's making the town look a lot better.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's one sitting not far from here, I think, that there's a telephone call that just needs to go, which none of ourselves own.
Okay, any questions of, uh, Glenn? Thanks a lot, Glenn.
So that's all I have. Um, you have the budget, like I said, keep in mind when you're looking through all the numbers. It is, general fund is not balanced and the water and sewer fund is not balanced. Um, in the next meeting, I'll bring forward the fee schedule so y'all can all look at the fee schedule based on some of the things that we talked about tonight. Tim and I will, um, bring forward the garbage, um, discussion on the fees. We'll have some hard numbers for you guys available at the next board meeting. Um, is there anything else that I missed that we need to have available for y'all at the next board meeting in regards to the budget that we couldn't answer tonight?
Well, we, it was, there's two things that would be really helpful and I know that as far as we get, the fund balance, as good as we can get. And, and, uh, the effect that the rules have cost us in.
So I s, I did up, I did update those numbers this afternoon, you may not have seen your email.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
It's gone down since last.
It has. So what he's talking about is, um, with this executive order, we cannot make people pay their bills. We're obviously not doing disconnects, we're not charging late fees. Um, when we did, uh, we're still running all the reports so I can keep up with how much money we're losing. Um, so when we ran the report, the cutoff, the theoretical cutoff report for April thirtieth, um, we were down about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We ran the report again today, um, some people have paid. It's about eighty-two thousand dollars now that we're missing in revenues for utilities. Um, that is garbage, which we all know, we talked about it earlier, we're, we're not making any money, that's a complete washout. So they're not, you know, that's not getting paid and then water, sewer and electric. Um, so what we're kind of waiting on at this point, and, and I don't know if I have any more information, but there is talk about when this stay-at-home order is lifted, the governor is going to require us to give six to twelve months for people to pay these bills back, which was not the intent when we originally said, okay, we're not gonna charge you a late fee, we're not gonna cut you off. Our intent was to say, okay, lifter, the, the order is lifted, we're gonna give you thirty days to make up your bill because you've known that this bill's coming at some point when this is all over. Um, there's some discussion in some of my finance calls with the school of government as to whether or not that's even legal for them to be able to do that to us, um, as a local government entity. We, we don't report to the, the, um, the commission, um, so can they make us do that? I don't know, you heard anything else?
No, I haven't heard anything else. I'm not, I agree with, with me questionable, but we're, we're also potentially, but we'll talk about that.
I think that's gonna be challenging. I got a, I got a communication back this afternoon, I got a discussion with Fred before.
I didn't think we were waiving late fees. Duke's not waiving late fees, I thought we were just having setups. We need to still be charging late fees.
We haven't been, we can, I mean, we got it, but we, when we went into, we stopped charging late fees as well. We stopped cutoffs and we didn't do a late, we, we've missed two late fee cycles.
We probably are gonna lose late fees, but we're not gonna lose the, the, the bills that have been paid.
And keep in mind, your late fees are fourteen hundred dollars. The majority of what's not getting paid is the physical bill that might be paid. Um, so we just, when we, when all this started, I, my anticipation was you have thirty days and then if I have to work further with some people based on, you know, I lost my job or, or whatnot, then I could work individually with those people. Um, but.
Well, because they might have shown up bill it.
Okay.
We probably are gonna lose though, I mean, that's not a lot of discussion, but right now, the house is at one point three six billion dollars and the senate is at one point two billion dollars. And that is a long ways apart and that, that is money that is gonna wind up coming to the town. And that's not gonna go very far. The only, only town in North Carolina that was in the first move was Charlotte. Everybody else is in this, running with them. It came from the federal government, so today, and now they're, give the numbers for the.
That's the discussion that, that has been talked about on the governor's level. Is, is we can, so state disorder war is to be lifted on tomorrow or today, tomorrow with our sixty days.
What you gotta do is to sit down with every customer that's overdue. And you gotta work out a, a schedule that to their satisfaction that would fit in, within six months or.
Four to twelve.
What they can afford to do. So you, you might, it might be three years and, and I, you know, I told the people up there, I told them that there's no way that the town can agree to that. And if, and if, uh, the governor does that, uh.
He's, he's, he's done it. You take a board, the same one, one twenty-four states, that customers shall be provided the opportunity to make reasonable payment arrangements pre-off over at least a six-month period, any of which is accumulated here in the effective period of this order, which is sixty days from March. And if it's extended a hundred and eighty days thereafter, so the six-month period should be calculated from the date of termination of the executive.
Duke Power, I guarantee you is gonna sue if, uh, if he tries to, uh, pay them or sort of.
Probably a small, small bit in that, but if, if these customers are behind, that they're holding deposits. Could we not put their deposits and transfer them to prepaid?
We could. I mean, I'm assuming we could do that, right?
Wild west stuff, guys, that you didn't see can't do that.
Right. Well, because prepaid's so new too, they probably, you know, how many people have that?
The governor couldn't do some of the things, so why don't we just do some of the things that we like to do?
And, and I will say, we, um, we were told we have to report our numbers to the utility commission, which I'm assuming they're getting pushed back because we, that every week for the last three weeks, we've gotten, you've got to spend another week, you don't have to report your information. But we were supposed to be reporting our information to the commission every week.
Why you're not, that would probably be good.
Exactly. And I think that's where they're getting the pushback from, but they wanted to know what we were losing in revenue. Now, I do give the commission a yearly report, um, but other than that, we don't, we don't report to them, we don't answer to them. So it, it's interesting that they, that they're trying to get that information from us, but they've pushed it back every week since they requested it. So, you know, I, I think they're seeing that we're not just gonna sit down and say that.
I mean, like what you said, yearly thing.
It's a yearly, um, it, I mean, there's several reports I have to do after the audit is done and that's just one of them. Now, when I came here, it hadn't been done in like six years, so I, I mean, I called us up and I'm still doing it, but, um, but yeah, it's a yearly. All the municipalities that have electricity do that yearly report, but it's not, it's basically given on what's in our books anyway, off of our audit. It's all public knowledge what they're getting. So, yeah, so six to twelve, so, so that is gonna affect our revenue and we are looking at that. Um, it's affecting us now in a sense. Um, we are lucky that the projects that we're ongoing are all funded by somebody else. Um, so we've been able to continue those projects like the public works building and, and the, um, the VS park. Um, but that's the discussion we most certainly have had in doing this budget since this all happened.
So the, for the deals that are unpaid, is it like, is it this, paying people or do you know that it's?
It's actually more, it, you know, um, shockingly, we had gotten the disconnect list down. We were maybe calling twenty customers before we did disconnects. I mean, that's, that's, we had really good, um, collection percentages prior to all this. Today, when I looked at the report, it was like two hundred happening, so.
The rule that's going around is that you don't pay the bill, it's only been from you.
Right. And, and trust, um.
That is why people are doing it.
Yeah, and, and Onida and Chris are working from home, they've been working from home for a couple of weeks now. But one of the things that they do is they're looking at these accounts and they are calling customers and saying, hey, we understand you don't have to pay the bill right now, but this bill is coming due. You need to make a payment so you're not too far behind when we have to say you need to pay this bill. So we are trying to, to talk to them.
So for the new, is there a job loss or?
I'm not sure. I haven't personally talked to them.
And for getting, ultimately, they're getting plenty more than they were when they were.
Oh, and I'm wondering too if the reason why we had more people paid. Yeah, I'm wondering if we had more people paid because the stimulus checks came out. And that's why more people paid in this, in the month of April than in the month of March. Um, I mean, that's, but I don't know.
We read the, the Duke Power rules and they were very clear that, uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna turn you off if you're gonna pay the bill.
Basically, they were, the late fees, that was before that law came out.
Yeah, Duke, Duke did that.
We're still talking late, I'm some rent, I know that, and I'm not committing any of that either.
I would say Duke did it maybe a week before we did it. Then about the same time, Denson and Selma, and then, then, uh, Duke.
And we are still able to add fees to things like, like, um, NSF checks. And we are still able to disconnect if it's an NSF check, um, if they don't pay that NSF check. But, but there's a stringent rule right now on us.
It's still been moving us to try to work with them to get things. It's not, it's probably an end yet, they, I just hope they're prepared for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions with Tim? Like y'all don't throw a job and putting this together, so we got, we got to get off now, buy the forward what you put. Salary spreadsheet that we did this year, I like that one.
Thank you. I thought that would be helpful.
Thank you very much.
I didn't, I, I didn't put the salaries in the notes, I felt like that was just an easier thing for me to manage because I have to do that spreadsheet anyway, so, um, I just felt like it would be easier for y'all to see. If y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to email or call, um, come see us, we'll, you know, just let us know. I, I'm actually working from home one day a week, so, um, I'm not in the office every single day. Fred's usually in the office in the morning, so if y'all have any questions, just let us know.
Well, the last, last thing that was said that, uh, even if you get back in there by June, that the shortfall on the average would be twenty percent this year or thirty percent.
I think we'll definitely see, and I think everybody, but I don't think it's just the local governments. I think the forecasters are showing that next year is when we're all gonna see the downfall in the funding streams.
But from our banking point, if we collect the money we didn't get this year, then that would help us.
And I will say FEMA's getting busy because we're all under a new FEMA disaster right now. Um, so of course I've applied for that, but I have talked to Andrew several times in the last couple of weeks. I'm like, hey, you owe us four hundred thousand dollars, I need that money before we close this fiscal year. So I am working on getting that money, um, for Fund Thirty to kind of get that where it needs to be. But if we get that, Fund Thirty would be in a much better place as well, so.
Anything else on other things that we're gonna, okay? All in place now.
Sorry about the internet problems. Bye.